Please rise, pledge your flag. Stand free.
The Social Life of the United States of America and the Republic of America. One nation, under God, in this law.
Remain standing, please. Lord, help us listen to the concerns of our people. Help us use a positive attitude where all will benefit. Give us the strength and fortitude to make the right decisions. Give us the insight that we may understand the needs of who we represent. The Lord said, "Listen and pray to me, and your problems will be solved." Amen.
Amen.
Joe, I think you've... I got your little seat.
Mayor Stafford here.
Alderman Lincoln here.
Alderman Sahaski here.
Alderman Weston here.
Alderman Sherman here.
Alderman Thompson here.
Alderman Woodward here.
Our president here.
Thank you. We need to make an addition to the agenda. We're going to need to go to executive session on a matter pending litigation. Item one.
Whereas the city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for this meeting of June 16th relative to allowing additional parking at 221 East Broadway, whereas said proposal was sent to the planning commission for the review. Whereas the city clerk was notified by the city attorney that the address on the map was incorrect and should be 211 East Broadway, not 221 East Broadway. Whereas the city attorney has advised that if this issue was to be voted on, the clerk should be authorized to re-advertise because of the incorrect address on map. Now therefore be it resolved, the city clerk is authorized, directed to re-advertise for public hearing to be held on July 7th, 7:00 PM, in the council chambers relative to allowing additional parking at 211 East Broadway.
I'll move that.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor, could I say one thing, please? On this, I was attending... I attended the planning board on this, and there were some suggestions that were made to this... to these individuals, and I would hope that they would have the opportunity to revisit their neighborhood and speak with their neighbors and bring it back.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion second. You just need a vote.
Just vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Whereas the clerk was authorized, directed, to advertise for public hearing to be held at this meeting July 16th relative to proposal to review the current pool fees, whereas the issue was sent to the legislative committee to review and to be returned to the common council at this meeting. Whereas the common council recommends a further review is needed by the recreation committee and the legislative committee. It be resolved that the proposal to review current pool fees be forwarded on to the recreation commission and after their review that the recreation committee forward their recommendation to the legislative committee for future consideration.
Do you hear motion?
I'll move it.
Second? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried.
Whereas the city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting relative to subsection 1182 of the real property tax law entitled "Cancellation or Reduction of Interest and Penalties and Other Charges." Whereas pursuant to that section, if the municipal government wishes to waive any penalties or to reduce cancel and hold or impart any interest penalties or other charges, it must first hold a public hearing regarding this matter. Whereas the mayor and the common council have been approached by someone interested in Lakeview Lanes in the city of Fulton and are asking the mayor and the council to waive penalties and other fees owed by Lakeview Lanes and to work out an agreement between the city of Fulton and the prospective interested parties. Mayor Stafford will hold the hearing open.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this issue? Please come forward.
Item one. Name is Richard Scott. Does the council thinking about giving this to these people for the bowling alley? Or you just want to listen tonight? Because my train of thought is, if these people, if we give them the break in the taxes for the $200,000 that they're asking, they should keep it for at least 10 years. And if they sell it within that time, they should divide that taxes up and pay the penalties up to that period of time on when they stole it.
But we are not forgiving taxes.
Well, that's what I'm saying. You asked me to speak on it.
Yeah, well, to understand, we cannot forgive taxes. What they're asking for is to forgiveness of the interest and penalty on the back taxes.
I will think the same thing, but I'll still carry it through. Let that carry on for 10 years. Divided, if they hold that property for 10 years, then we won't charge them nothing. But if they go out and sell it in two or three years, that couple hundred thousand dollars is a good profit. I think the taxpayers deserve a better break. I say let them keep it a certain amount of time.
There's really no legal way to force that, though, to force them to maintain ownership for any length of time. I mean, they could certainly stand up and say they intend to make a go of it and want to be here for as long as they're alive or their corporation continues, but legally we can't really force that.
How come some of the things in HUD, the federal government can enforce that in housing, we can't afford their, you know, forces here?
Well, that's...
You know, if you get a house through HUD, you have to keep it a certain amount of time. That's our public money being put. That's the penalties they pay that they want to get out underneath it. But if you want to give them $200,000, I'm against it. But if they want to go along, you know, the interest or whatever, that's what we're given. If you... If they want to take and set up an agreement with us to hold that for a certain amount of time, then I'll forgive them. But if they don't, they'll pay the penalties.
If that is legal to do something like that, we could do it. But if it is not within our legal rights, we cannot do it. But this... What this will do is get us the amount of back taxes that are owed in the amount of That will bring that into the city, and it will put that place establishment back on the tax rolls.
Well, how much are we giving them?
What's the number, Dave?
Hundred and sixty. Hundred and sixty?
It was a hundred and...
About a hundred and sixty.
About a hundred and sixty?
All right. You give them $160,000, two years down the road, they sell it. That's a profit and their profit, their pocket, too. They're going to invest the money to get into it like any other company. It's going to bring it up so that when they go to sell the place, it'll bring more money, too.
Definitely. They are going to upgrade it.
I should be the taxpayer, forfeit them, give them $160,000.
But right now, to get somebody in there, the only way with the amount of money that they want to invest in that, the only way that would be feasible for them to do this would be have the interest and penalties waived on this. They can't afford to make all the renovations to that property and take care of the other obligations and pay everything to the city. Now, we cannot forgive, as I said, we cannot forgive the taxes, and they are going to pay the back taxes in the amount of in excess of $200,000. All we are doing is looking for to waive the interest and penalties on the back taxes.
I understand that, and I was here to the last meeting when we brought that up. But then again, I'd like to ask Mr. Hawthorne, is how come the federal government do HUD the same thing? You can go in and buy one of their houses, and they will forgive you to a certain amount of time, and we, the city government, can't do this?
Because it's a loan, I guess is the simplest answer. I mean, this is a... This isn't a... This isn't, in essence, a loan like a federal government loan. This is a forgiveness of a debt. Let me just say this. If... I mean, I don't know which way the council's going. I don't...
Oh, yeah, do I?
But my understanding from the proposals, the people that want to do this, is they cannot financially do it without the penalties and interest being forgiven, meaning that if the council says no, they're not going to go in there. The building's still going to sit there. We're going to expend time and money to take it on back taxes. There's, I believe, at least one substantial mortgage already on the property that we're going to be subject to. The bottom line is it's going to be very difficult for the city to get any tax revenue out of that building. So that's the trade-off that has to be made.
Okay. You think it's going to be a wise trade-off to give up?
No guarantee, sir, but it's certainly a burden of hand is better than what...
Well, I've seen a lot of burden of hand go around this council, not this one, but around this state.
In regards to this gentleman's thing, I don't know how he says we're giving up money because now you're losing it because the building's not being used at all. So him thinking that you're giving off $160,000, not you're going to make that within the first year that you've got the business back going. That's why I look out, but I don't know where he gets it. We're losing $160,000 in the city. You're going to lose that if that building sits like bull ramming, crashes to the ground. So...
You're also going to collect the back taxes that you wrote on it now, too.
Right. Right. You're making money, plus when Mike gets it going...
And sales tax.
...and gets all the tournaments and stuff in here, that brings people into the hotels, into the restaurants...
The sales tax.
...and things that they need to get for more money. So you're not going to lose in the long run.
I think it's also important to point out that it's not the new company that was late paying the taxes for seven years. You know, it's the old company who didn't pay anything. So at least they're willing to pay seven years' worth of back taxes. They could come in. I won't say that.
As the elderman received in the mail this week, I sent you a letter. My name is Adele Sherman, and I'm not only a taxpayer in the city, I also am a bowler. I don't think unless you bowl, you understand how much revenue is brought in by bowling. Our league alone, when I was the treasurer, brought in $14,000 in one season. That's just one league alone. I've met Mr. McCracken about a year and a half ago. He's a very well-respected businessman, and as far as the tournament, the state tournament that he brought in this year, the whole city benefited from that. There were hotels used, there were restaurants used, there were stand-in-room-only at times. Five squads were brought in a day of five-man teams. That's a lot of revenue for the city. And as David just said, you know, that building's giving you zero right now. So I've seen how Flamingo's gone. I see... I have seen how all the renovations have taken place, and I also have seen the work that's going to be done to Lakeview Lanes by the fall. So it's time to bring the bowlers back to Fulton. They're here, they're ready to bowl. I mean, as you can see, there's plenty of bowlers here that are willing to speak about this. So, you know, I think you need to look long and hard at this.
I have had a number of people contact me by phone and in person in favor of... in favor of doing this. So a lot of people want to see this back on the tax rolls, want to see it open and prospering. Anybody else?
My name is Al Vizcom. We've seen the negative side of this. That gentleman gave us the negative. Mr. Sherman gave us one of the positives. What people don't understand about a bowling alley, it's not just you and I, the average man that bowls, the average woman. You have the senior citizens. You have the high schools that have two programs, the traveling league and their house leagues. Without a bowling alley here, they're going to have to give those up. They can't handle it. You have your handicaps, bowseys, twice a week, they bowl. All this money's coming in, and if this gentleman can't open that lane, we're not only hurting ourselves and the city, we're hurting all these other people.
Yes.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any further comment from the... Yes.
I'm representing the 55 and above and alive, alive, 55 and above. And we have had for a number of years a whole 20-team league of elderly people, which I am one of them. And God help us, we have no place now. We have to take and go up to a swiggle, and there's no place to go, and you know it as well as I do. We need it, and not only that, but this, you talk about the kids. The kids are in there bowling all the time. Every set, you've got tournaments and stuff for them. Keeps the kids off in the street. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comment from the council?
No, the only thing I'd like to say, your honor, is we did... The council looked at this close, and it's hard to forgive penalties. I know that because some people have a hard time paying their taxes. But we've taken a lot of buildings down in the city over the last several years because people get back on taxes, and then they can't afford to maintain the buildings, and they set for years, and then the next thing you know, we tear them down and write off the taxes, and we have nothing. These people made a presentation to us, and they took a bowling alley similar to this one in another community and made it pay and made it work. So I guess what we're doing is trading $160,000 for all the back taxes. And they... Probably the assessment will be up when they fix the building because they have plans to do that. So I think it might be a necessary evil.
All right. If there's no further comment, I will declare this public hearing closed.
Now therefore be it resolved that the penalties and other fees are hereby waived, and the mayor is authorized to sign an agreement with the prospective parties to pay the delinquent general tax, school tax, and fees that have already been remitted to the school in the amount of $200,552.45 contingent that the prospective parties have met all the legal agreements deemed necessary by the city attorney prior to the mayor signing said agreement.
I'll move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Resolved the following claims are referred to our city attorney. Notice of claim submitted by Mary Shriver, 416 West First Street, for items alleged to have been removed from a residence of 461 West First Street by Fulton Police Department on her before March 20th. Notice of claim submitted by Catherine and Donald Lamb for personal injuries subshaned by Catherine Lamb alleged to have occurred on her about April 8th, when said claimant was involved in a motor vehicle accident on West Broadway. Letter claimed submitted by Gerald Meeker, 12 South Seventh Street, alleged to have occurred on May 22nd, when he struck some cement chunks in the road, and his electric wheelchair was damaged on Academy Street by Voorhees Park. Letter claimed submitted by Richard Holloway, 367 South Sixth Street, for damages to his lamp post ornament light alleged to have occurred on June 4th while a tree was being removed on his property.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second? Second? Yep. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Notation that the clerk has advised his council the following city employees to file within the proper letters this disclosure pursuant to Section 803 General Municipal Law, their intent to participate in the city auction to be held on Thursday, June 25th. Said disclosures are to be entered in the council minutes of this meeting of June 16th as a matter of record. Mary Ann Brewer, Fulton Police Department, Deborah Simmer, City Chamberlain's Office, Christopher Chatterell, Fulton Police Department.
Next item.
Resolved that the quotes submitted by Mr. Richard Allen and Mr. Lyle Wollivan to safely remove nuisance wildlife from the city Fulton as requested by the city at a rate of $40 per animal. So everybody accept it, and be it further resolved that the quote of Mr. William Gamble $30 plus a $10 service fee for complaints resorted to where new animals are dealt with.
Do you hear motion?
I'll move it.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Whereas the clerk was authorized, directed, to receive sealed bids in his office on her before June 8th up to 4:00 PM and to be publicly open in the common council chambers of the municipal building on June 8th, right after the 4:00 PM deadline for the Fulton Canal landing project in accordance with specifications prepared by Saratoga Associates. Whereas the bids were open with Carol Rutledge and Jeff Hodge and the prospective bidders as read aloud as follows. Bitter number one, Forlito Construction, $1,399,085. Bitter number two, James and Ross Sons Incorporated, $1,477,996. And Tuscarora Construction, $1,496,496,563. Whereas the city also asked said bidders to supply bids for alternate approaches to the project. Whereas the Saratoga Associates, after the review of all bids, recommended the bid be awarded to the low bidder, being Forlito Construction, in the amount of $1,399,085, which is their base bid, plus alternates 1, 5, 7, 8, 11, 13, A, C, and D, in an alternate 14, for a total amount of $1,779,082, subject to the contractor getting approval from HUD. Whereas the council agrees with the recommendation of Saratoga. Now therefore be it resolved that the low bid in alternates described above of Forlito Construction in the amount of $1,779,082 is hereby accepted and awarded to Forlito Construction, and be it further resolved that City Chamberlain is hereby authorized to issue an anticipation note of approximately $500,000 to complete the total project.
Do you have it, your honor? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have some discussion here.
Discussion?
Yeah. Are the folks from Saratoga here?
Yes.
This came in quite a bit higher than we thought. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Why?
Can't get any simpler than that.
I understand, so I've had you before. Fortunately, I very likely with that news, did take bids, pre-mothers submitted, and the range was about $100,000 from below the high of the base bid, which they altered and lost. I think that's telling us that the contractors viewed the project consistently in the context of the difficulty in the market. It looks like the project's about $300,000 in budget, and they can choose off a couple things, including the degree of difficulty associated with the aggressive schedule we've committed and the contractual requirements to finish construction before Thanksgiving. The coordination with the force account work of the city, I think, added to the dynamic in terms of mobilization, coordination premiums. And there were three items that were in excess of estimates, including subgrade construction was more expensive, which is required from the contractor. The gazebo came in higher than we had projected, and the granite curbing, frankly, we overspec and we're going to change order that out, which is, I think, pull that base twice down to some extent. Those are the three areas that I see that I think led to the situation that we're in. Evaluating where we go from here, because of the uniform bidding, I don't see we're delaying this award would save any money. I don't see delaying it to another construction season would save any money. If anything, we're beginning to see construction now beginning to firm up in terms of pricing across the state. Contractors seem to be finding work and bidding more aggressively. We had hoped when we put the project out, the bid, that we'd see a better bidding environment. In fact, the matter is, it's going in the other direction. So we don't recommend delaying. We think that would only cost us more.
Cost two more? Cost two more?
The council.
Yes, sir.
Because we bid such a tight schedule, is there penalties built in if they fall behind on their time?
We've taken a...
Financial penalties?
A performance bond, yes, with a specific completion date.
So if they don't meet that date, will we recoup some of the money?
That'll be the city's decision. If they choose to pull the performance bond, the answer's yes.
Okay.
Now, but it has to be caused. It's not a, you know, a...
Well, I know. But that seems to be why the price was higher, because of the timeframe.
How are we going to stay on top of this to make sure it gets done on time, within budget?
With me this evening is Scott Carson, who will be the project representative. We can retain the contract by the city for inspections throughout the project. We will have someone from Scott onsite three days a week plus office time. This is a lump sum project, so it's not a situation where we need to be measuring yards and trucks and dirt and that sort of thing. It's really, what we're looking at is that the specs are met in terms of the quality of work and it's completed to the standard of the extent it's been specified.
They'll be documenting days if they're not down there because of, you know, I mean, because they're liable to say they had inclement weather when they really didn't, you know? I mean, six months later, it's kind of hard to remember.
We use engineer's field logs where the weather's recorded on a daily basis so we can keep track of that based on what actually happens here in Fulton.
What about cost overruns?
We have built a contingency...
It's only $30,000.
...base bid in the $30,000.
Which is what? What, 2%? I think of the bid.
It's a modest amount. We'd like to add to that, and I mentioned earlier, we'd like to negotiate out the excess of granite curbing. We actually overspec the granite section. I'd like to bring it down to DOT standards, and it's so going, I believe, along with the contingency.
All right. I just want to get in the spot. I know at least this council is familiar with, we've accepted bids before and have jobs come in at two and three times the cost. I just want to make sure that's not going to be a problem.
Yeah, it's not our intent, that's for sure. We are as interested in you and committed as you are to having a successful project. We believe, like you do, this project is vitally important to the revitalization of downtown, and we're going to work just as hard as you and the staff to make sure we achieve that.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved, the mayor be authorized to sign the memorandum of agreement between the city of Fulton and the International Association of Firefighters Local 3,063, effective January 1st, 1996 to December 31st, 1996, as per task.
Do I have a motion? I'll move it. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved, the city clerk is hereby authorized, directed, to advertise for a public hearing to be held on July 7th at 7:00 PM in the council chambers relative to offering an early retirement incentive offered by the New York State Retirement System.
Motion? Move it. Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Do we know how many employees could be affected by this?
We have an idea how many.
Once... I think he's putting together a list now, maybe 10 are in that neighborhood. But once we have the public hearing, we'll have the information by then.
Is Ed here? Is Ed here?
Yeah, Ed will be here for that, yes. Next item.
Whereas the fire and police commission, after their meeting of June 16th, 1998, appointed Anthony Gria as fire chief for the city of Fulton Fire Department effective immediately. Therefore be it resolved that the mayor be authorized to sign an agreement with Anthony Gria as the fire chief in the Fulton Fire Department effective June 16th, 1998, and to expire December 31st, 1998.
Mayor, has anything changed from the agreement that we looked at two weeks ago?
No.
Okay.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Does anyone in on the council have any items to bring before the council?
Mayor, this is out of the ordinary if I could just speak, because I'm here, my wife is home, and today is our 35th wedding anniversary, so I just want to say...
Congratulations.
Happy to her, to my bride.
Anyone in the audience have any items to bring before the council? Sir?
Is this working? There we go. Hey. 13 days ago, my wife had read a piece in the paper regarding the common council's motion to authorize Mayor Stafford to sign a contract with Frontier Cellular, allowing the company to install cellular transmitter...
to install cellular transmitters on the East Broadway Water Tower, which is located next to the Fairgrave Elementary School. Having heard of past concerns in the media on the subject, she went to the Fulton Public Library and signed out three books relating to the subject. What she read was very alarming and created an immediate need to find out more information. My wife was able to locate and speak with the author of one of these books, Dr. Robert Becker, who was a fully funded investigator for the Veterans Administration and had received the highest award offered by the VA for scientific research. Dr. Becker urged my wife to take this very seriously and indicated to her that current studies and safety standards regarding exposure to radio frequency and microwave radiation by the federal government refers to thermal radiation and not biological radiation. We decided at that point to become proactive and have spent an exhausting two weeks attempting to educate ourselves and find out as much about information possible relating to this subject. What we have found does not prove that emissions produced by cellular antennas are conclusively safe or unsafe. What we did find are studies supporting both sides of the issues and uncertainty from the federal government themselves regarding safe levels of exposure. And I have some excerpts from the FCC website that have relevance to our forum. I went onto the website from the FCC, and the Telecommunications Act of 1996 established the federal communications as a regulatory agency to set and enforce radio frequency safety levels. This in spite of the fact that the FCC has acknowledged time and time again that it is not a public health agency. The FCC by its own admission has neither the technical expertise to study and establish safe standards nor the human resources to enforce them. There's a bunch of other information. I'll try to keep this brief, but it's very important to us. I'd like to also state for the record that I'm not a scientist. I don't claim to be one, nor is my wife. What we are are strictly parents. We're concerned parents. We're concerned about our kids' welfare and health, as well as all the kids that attend Fairgrave Elementary. And one of the things that we did notice that consumer opposition to cellular tower sighting isn't confined to Fulton or the US. It's a global concern, and it's occurring around the world, has resulted in similar bans and moratoriums. New Zealand, for instance, the entire country has banned all cellular antennas on school property in an effort to protect its children from RF and microwave radiation. And I guess I have to ask you a question. Is the entire country of New Zealand comprised of a bunch of schizophrenic paranoid people? I don't think so. There must be a reason why they've banned it. The telecommunication representatives at public hearings and in the press, we did get to see the meeting where the gentleman stood before you and made his presentation. But on the website, and this is affecting everywhere across the country, they've noticed that representatives at public hearings and in the press routinely blur the distinction between frequencies likening their installations to 100 watt light bulbs. And I remember he said that. It's just like a 100 watt light bulb in a building. And it's kind of an attempt to confuse and placate concerned citizens. What they leave out is that their systems operate at ultra-high frequencies, not the same thing as a light bulb. And ultra-high frequencies are maximally absorbed by human tissue. And the last thing I really have to say on the issue is, I would ask the cellular company for guarantees. For example, will they guarantee the safety of the tower in writing with, you know, with take liability, for example? Will they foot medical bills for any and all local citizens who develop an illness and disease as a result of their facilities? Will they guarantee property values? Will they purchase homes and property at fair market value if such property becomes devalued or unsalable as a result of the facility? As a consumer, do you purchase products without a guarantee? And it's, and basically what I'd like to ask the common council, now I don't know, we've asked many people, Mayor, I don't know if you've actually signed this agreement.
Yes, I have.
Have you have signed it? We would, we noticed that nothing has been erected yet. We would ask that the city do whatever they can.
No, you realize that this is not a tower.
Yeah, the tower is irrelevant to us because we're not concerned about the structure. We're concerned about the electromagnetic fields and the radiation and the possible health hazards to the kids. That's all we care about. I mean, the, I mean, a tower would be, I guess, an eyesore, visual pollution, but that's not our concern, and we're not worried about them climbing on the water tower. We are worried about strictly just the EMF and the EMR and the things that other countries have decided that it's not safe for kids. And so, I would ask, I would petition each one of you to do whatever you could. Harley, I talked to you last night. You said that there was a possibility that because it is a public structure, you said there's a possibility that...
I think we need to, I would offer a resolution that we ask the city attorney to take a look a little bit more closely at the contract.
Okay, because you had mentioned that because it's a public structure, that there's a possibility that...
And I told you last night, I'm not a lawyer. I don't know, so I will ask him to take a look at the contract.
Right, well, that's, that's the concerns of quite a few people, and that's what we'd like to see, if you could do whatever you can to at least apply a moratorium to more research, so you have a better chance to get more information and also hear the concerns of the local residents and the cities and your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
What's it for?
But what's...
This is on a moratorium? To have the city attorney look into the legality of the contract that we're involved in.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Yes, Mayor?
Okay, I have a copy for you guys. It's a little bit complicated. My name is Mary Virginia Stam. I was asked to come here. My training is a master's degree in medical genetics, specialty in population studies and dysmorphology. Dysmorphology is the study of effects of any teratogen on the development of human fetuses. In 1961, a new drug was introduced and promised to be a safe mild sedative, much to the chagrin of its maker. The US refused to approve it for use in this country. The reason for the refusal was that not enough evidence was presented to indicate its safety. No evidence was offered that the drug was unsafe. Not enough evidence was provided that it was. European countries had less stringent drug requirements, and the drug was widely prescribed. It was especially used to alleviate anxiety in pregnant women. The US was criticized, and wealthy women went to Europe to obtain this drug. Seven months later, the first of hundreds of babies were born with severe limb and other malformations. Eventually, it was possible to determine which day, between day 40 and day 60, the drug was used by the damage that it did. The Supreme Court ruled that a woman did not have a right to abort a defective baby, and wealthy women returned to Europe to attain abortions. The drug was thalidomide. Note, the drug was not withheld because of evidence of danger. The drug was withheld because there was not enough evidence of safety. No one can prove that EMF causes problems. Science does not prove anything. But no one has long-term studies offering significant evidence that EMF does not. The effects of EMF may take years to appear. Children between the ages of five and 13 will be exposed to at least 180 days per year. Do we as parents want to wait and see if something shows up in 10 or 15 years? Do we want to have our children demonstrate problems that will accurately show which years they were at Fairgrave School? It is easy for profit-making companies to banter about studies proving anything they want. The tobacco industry did that for years. Science does not prove anything. Scientists tried to disprove a null hypothesis. In this case, the null hypothesis is that EMF has no effect on living organisms. But that does not mean that the null hypothesis is proved. Studies so far have not disproved it. In order to indicate that EMF is likely to be harmful, convention dictates that there is a less than 5% chance that it is not harmful. Do you understand that? A scientist will not go on the record and say it is not harmful unless there is less than a 5% chance that it is not harmful. To date, studies indicate that there may be a 50 to 20% chance that EMF is not harmful. No scientist is going to tell you something is not harmful when studies demonstrate a 15 to 20% chance that it is not harmful. Do you understand that? Because I hear so many studies about telling what proven and not proving. The studies are not conclusive because the studies have not shown with a less than 5% frequency that they are not harmful. Instead, the studies have shown that the frequency of them being not harmful probability is in the order of 20%. This is what you are being told is safe. I know this is complicated. That is why a salesman presents the concept. He can gloss over the complexities, but you can't do that. You have a responsibility to your constituents to understand what you want them to endure for $7,200 per year. What is that, a nickel a taxpayer or a nickel a citizen? Even if your constituents do not now attend Fairgrave, many will move into that district. And you have to ask yourself where in the city you want to expose people to what may turn out to be the asbestos of the next century for $7,200 a year. Anybody, do you understand what I'm saying on that?
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bear with me, here I have leukaemia. First, I have a question. The voting you did, was that to look at the contract or to place a moratorium?
To see what we can do with the contract.
Okay. Okay. All right. I really don't understand, because the Fulton Common Council set a precedence when they turned down cellular towers at the Granby Elementary School. This should never be. The Granby citizens were concerned. They were concerned for their children. They were concerned for their properties. They said no. It was heard. The Fairgrave citizens were concerned. They have concern for their children. They have concern for their property. They're saying no. I don't even see why the concern on the West Side is being looked at differently than the concern on the East Side. And I'm sure this council understands that.
The federal law changed between the two times.
Two?
For one thing.
Federal law?
The federal law, the Communications, Federal Communications Act of 1996.
And how did that change? Can I ask?
How did it change? It said that these are not a health hazard and cannot be considered in a health hazard in the sighting process.
What about property values? Citizens on the Granby side said property values. We're saying the same thing?
Property values weren't involved in this. We were talking before that the Granby site was a health situation.
The Granby people fully testified that they had property value concerns. That was even on the tape on April 7th. It was brought out that they had property value concerns.
That is why we looked at the possibility. They weren't looking at putting in a tower. Usually, it is towers that...
Right.
That affect the property values. From what they told us, these were three small antennas that would be attached to a structure that is already there.
And that was at Granby also? They wanted to put three antennas on their water tower? It's the same exact situation. The council said no for Granby. It's not just a health issue. It's property values. Yes, we have health issues, and they can hide behind the laws, and you can say, you know, well, you know, we all have opinions. With all the information out there, the confusion about it, we have the right to be concerned. We have the right to be threatened. We have the right to protect our children and our homes.
Yes, you do.
It's the council's responsibility to protect our children and its citizens.
Yes, it is.
So, I don't see how the concern is any different. It should never have come. And I ask for a moratorium of time to seek a different site on this issue.
Thank you.
They could actually, they could actually seek some, another position right next to that, and we wouldn't have a say. They could find private property right next to that tower, locate that tower right there. You or I, or anybody else in the council, we have one thing to say about it.
Yeah, but at least you would have the responsibility on your head.
Right now, right now, how we can say this place is poor. There are schools in Rochester that have these antennas, bottom and on their roof.
And in four years, we might have it as bad for them and say, sorry.
The thing is...
Why take the risk?
Cell phones, maybe one person has died from cell phone.
In 15 years, cell phones have been around? Studies like that?
Can you name anybody that's been saved by cell phones?
I'm sorry?
Can you name anybody that's injured or was saved because of cell phones?
Oh, I would say that that's, that there are probably people that have their lives saved by CB radios, by cell phones, by any kind of communication.
This is an issue to enhance the light, the visibility, the quality of light. That's what we're talking about.
Mark, but I don't, I don't think that that's the issue. I think people use cell phones. I mean, I mean, I think cell phones are great. I'm just concerned with the placement of these whips, these structures.
John, have you done any research at all on it?
Yes, he has.
Have you done any reading? This is what Ragman has given you.
No, I have done a lot. Back four years ago, I had the same situation with cellular one over in my ward. I did a lot of research. I talked to Dr. Becker. I also talked to Ted Leibro.
What is Dr. Becker, has Dr. Becker ever been here?
No.
I talked to Dr. Becker, has he ever been here?
No.
Check out the door. Yeah. I want to hear something. I want to hear from the council and say something in front of the council.
Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Alex Grimshaw. And a couple of points were brought up that I'd like to clarify. I was involved with the town of Alney when Saudi 11 wanted a site, a tower over on Larry Rowley's property. And a number of the citizens were concerned at the time. We did some reading. We did some research. And what we were able to do is we presented some facts to the town of Alney as well as to the courts, because we ended up suing the town over this particular issue. The concern I have is some of the information that you were given by the salesman is incorrect. And the FCC 1996 law has nothing to do with safety. The FCC by its own statement makes no jurisdiction over the safety of anything. So, that was misquoted. It was also misquoted that he said these were analog, these are not digital, it's not the same thing. In a Frontier Cellular news release that was in conjunction with the award of a contract to Lucent Technologies, they stated that this is a digital system. This is not an analog system. So, the concern I have is that you were given information that was incorrect, and that's the concern I have. So, what you were presented and what you're actually getting are not necessarily the same. So, what I would ask the common council to do is review the facts before making a decision, just as with the Canal View project and the other things you are getting, what is actually being represented. So, that's what I would ask you to do before you make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. We have some representatives here from Frontier Cellular that possibly could shed some more light on some of the issues that were brought up tonight. Sir?
Thank you, Mayor Stafford. My name is David Levy. I'm with Nixon Hargrave, Devonson Doyle. We're a law firm in Rochester. We represent Frontier Cellular. With me tonight is John Engelbert, who is a project manager at Frontier Cellular on this project. And also with us tonight is this gentleman, Dr. Tom Ely. Dr. Ely is a, an MD-type doctor. He's a medical doctor. He has worked in the study of EMF for about half a century. And during the better part of those 50 years, he has been a member of the three national organizations which are set up to study EMF and set safety standards for EMF. Those three organizations being the National Council on Radiation Protection and Measurements, or the NCRP, the American National Standards Institute, ANCI or ANSI, and the Institute of Electrical and Electronics Engineers, IEEE. We asked Dr. Ely to come with us tonight in order to explain cellular and EMF phenomena so as to let the public here in Fulton know that this... so as to let the public here in Fulton know that this is not a safety issue. As a, as a legal matter, just to clarify, in 1996, the US Congress did pass the Telecommunications Act of 1996. And in Section 704 of that act, there's a provision which says that municipalities may not regulate cellular or other wireless service providers on the basis of electromagnetic emissions as long as the emissions are within the standards approved by the FCC. Okay? And the FCC has looked to ANSI, IEEE, two of those three organizations I just talked about. They've looked to those organizations for the safety standard. And of course, Frontier Cellular's transmissions comply with those standards. So having given that brief introduction and clarifying the federal law which preempts the field in this area, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Ely to respond to the comments made by you folks and any questions that you might have and also questions from, from the council.
Could I ask you a question?
Sure.
We can't regulate these based on health issues, is what you're saying? As long as they're within the guidelines set by the FCC?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm looking at some of this Section 704 you're talking about. We can't prohibit directly or indirectly the provision of such services. But if we already have three, does that mean we gotta have as, I mean, is there a limit? Could it be 100, 500?
Providers?
Right.
Well, the number of providers is limited by the number of FCC licenses that have been granted. So that would set a limit on the number.
Yeah, well, I guess you misunderstood me. What I meant was, as long as we're making provision for these services, do we have to make provisions to allow more?
Sites.
More sites. You understand what I'm saying?
Well, you, you also, under the, under the Telecommunications Act, may not discriminate against one provider over another. So if one provider happens to come in to this area later than another, the providers have a right to come in and provide service. The idea being that there would be competition in the market for these services so as to improve the quality of the service and, and bring down prices.
I'm glad you mentioned that.
What about location?
Yeah. I'm glad you mentioned that because I had calls on this and they referred to Frontier and I said it's not Frontier, it's SMSA. That's what our resolution said. So this is, but it is Frontier. They're just calling themselves something different.
Frontier Cellular is the trade name or the street name for the holder of license, which is that partnership name. The partnership is a legal entity comprised of Frontier, Bell Atlantic, and they got together and purchased the FCC license to provide cellular service in this area.
All right, so the one that we've got on Challenger 7 Drive is Frontier. And the SMSA that we agreed to
SMS, that's us. That's Frontier.
But it's Frontier?
The one over on Challenger Drive, Cellular One. That's Cellular One.
Oh, that's not Frontier.
No.
What about the two on top of Topath Towers? Are you involved in them?
No, that is, I believe, OmniPoint.
I talked to them because that's also in my ward. It's been an interesting week. I talked to the company that actually owns Topath Towers and there are three. There's OmniPoint, Beep Call, and Nation Page. The most recent one, Beep Call and Nation Page are the, the last two have been there for several years. And OmniPoint installed theirs in October of 1997.
And those providers are on, on top of an apartment building?
Yes. In fact, there's a couple of people here who actually live in that building.
Okay.
There are three.
So they're two different companies?
Yes.
On the apartment building?
Yes, on Topath Towers.
And you're not one of those?
No.
Sir, I understand that I don't think anybody here is discriminating against the providers.
No, no, I'm not suggesting that. I, I just, I was just trying to respond to this question.
I would like to respond to our, or the council's ability to elect whether or not they have any input on where the site for a given provider may be placed.
I think we could do that. I think we could, I think we could zone certain areas for specific things like cellular communication equipment and different things like that. I think we do have the ability to do that, don't we, David?
If I may?
Go ahead.
Oh, thanks. Under federal law, there are those limitations which I mentioned. Under state law, cellular companies are public utilities, which means that public utilities are allowed to be where they need to be in order to provide service to the public. Cellular telephone providers and wireless providers have very limited flexibility as to where they need to locate base stations in order to provide good service to the community. As long as a company can establish need in the community for the service it proposes, it has a right to be located where, where it proposes to be.
In order for the community to be one spot, one set. It has a right to kill itself, to jeopardize itself.
What you're, what you're telling us is you could be on that water tower because you're a public utility, is what you're telling us. I think that's what everybody's getting the impression from.
I'm, I'm saying that we, we have to prove that we need to be in a location that we're proposing to provide service. And, and when we do that
Initially, you mean, or after, after you've already established yourself in the community which you are already here? So I mean, are you saying, and I understand that it's presenting, it's sounding, you're saying presenting yourself to a community for the first time as an inducence to that community, but you're already here. So does that still apply for additional sites?
You mean, we're here
Placing wherever you want and as many as you want?
We're here in the sense that
You already have towers in Fulton, or you have a tower in the north of, in the Fulton District, roughly.
We're here talking about this site because of service coverage gaps in that part of town and in, and in the area surrounding that. The current sites in the network are not adequate to provide the service that's needed in those areas. That's why we're here.
Basically, you're saying you have a right to come in and do whatever you want. Once you're here, they'll look and regulate you, that you have total, total authority over anything. And to me, that doesn't make sense.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense either.
Well, that's not what I said. I mean, that's what you said.
I think what you said is that you have the right to put them wherever you want. They're the right as a public utility. Once you're here, we cannot regulate you. You have a right to do all this. Excuse me. I'd really like to see this law that's just fair praise granted. I'd like to really see what gave you the right to do whatever you want to any of us anywhere, but absolutely nobody's supposed to do anything.
Well, I'm afraid that my comments are being sort of embellished and, and taken to say things that I didn't say. But
Can I ask you a question? As, as the council, can we only authorize or not authorize on city property that you could locate anywhere that you would like to privately? Pardon me? The council can only decide whether you can locate communications on their property, city property, whereas you could possibly locate on any private property.
That is correct. If the water tank site were not available and when the telephone company identifies an area that needs service, the first thing it does is try to locate existing structures to place its antennas on so as to minimize the visual impact. These kinds of sites have, in our experience, been the most acceptable. If a site like this were not available, we would have to erect a tower on private property.
Could I ask you a question? What would one of those towers cost to install? What's the cost to the company? To erect the tower?
The
Fifty thousand?
For the tower itself, approximately 50,000, depending on the type and size of the tower.
They can cost as much as 200 to 800,000 a year for a study. They can be rather expensive depending on what they, you know, what their capacity is.
The reason I asked that question was that four years ago, Cellular One wanted to locate near the Granby school. And there were some real concerns and Cellular One moved their tower or built a tower rather than installing the antenna on the water tower. They moved to a location not far from there in the west side where it would, where it's a, a structure. It's on private property. The owner gets 6,200 or $6,000 a year lease. The city has no control over them putting as many dishes or other structures on that structure. So if we don't, as a city council, we would lose control if we didn't cite it on our own property somewhere.
Can I ask you a question? If you put that at private property, don't you have to go to zoning board? So you, would you have, the city would you have a say in it?
It would depend on where that private property is located and what the zoning ordinance would require. But if the zoning ordinance would require a zoning board review, then yes, we would.
Is it the zoning board of the city that will do it?
Yeah, but I don't, I'm not sure of the specifics, but they located it over on the west side. It must be the zoning approved it. I don't know. I wouldn't think so.
Is there any clause pertaining to the fact that the tower is a certain height and it has to be the land a certain diameter around it in case the tower was to top it? In other words, do you have to have a, by law, I, I don't know about town or city laws, but is, are there any regulations about the size of the property, height versus width of the property?
I can't speak to what the city code provides, but it is not, it's not unusual these days for municipal ordinances to have provisions governing that kind of thing. And people refer to that as a fall zone or The towers, and of course, we're not talking about a, a tower in this case. We're talking about the water tank, right? But while we're on the subject, the towers are designed and constructed to fall a certain way, to fall within a fraction of their height, kind of like an accordion. They collapse on themselves. However, some municipalities have seen fit to require fall zones around it to address your, what you're talking about, ma'am.
The tower that was mentioned, that was the answer
Four years ago, is there a reason why the company has decided to collate, locate with that, that company? I'm just kind of curious why, to fight the crowds and everything. Why not just go that other route? John, you'll correct me if I'm wrong here, but that tower is outside of the area within which we need a site to provide the service here. If, if that approved tower had been within our search area, that would have been of interest to us.
How close do you think your towers have to be?
How close do they have to be? It depends, ma'am, on a couple of factors. It depends on the capacity of usage, for one thing. Like in urban areas, populous areas like, take New York City for example, they, they have, they have cellular facilities, antennas on building tops very close to one another. And that is because there are a lot of people there using phones. In a rural area, the radius of a cell, meaning a geographic area served by a base station, is generally roughly four, five to seven miles. John, am I about right there?
Could I ask a question? What other sites did you look at before you chose the water tower up on Water Tower Hill? Were there other sites? Was this your first choice, apparently? Where, where were the other sites that you were looking at?
We also looked at, we also looked at Topath Towers, but we didn't have any, did not have any success with that site owner. That was a primary.
But as I mentioned, existing structures are, are our best option, we feel. I mean, well, it, it's cost effective if, you know, sometimes going on an existing structure, it can be a wash because you'll pay, you'll pay more rent.
Six hundred bucks a month.
Well, I can't, I can't speak to that, to that economy. I mean, sometimes
Hundred bucks a month.
Well, not only for cost effectiveness, just accepting, accepting that as a rationale, but also because of what I mentioned earlier, which is the desire to locate antennas so that they're not obtrusive, so that they blend in, they're not noticeable, and they don't, there's not another tall
But as local citizens, we don't care about that. What we care about is, is a potential danger, the doubt that
You're talking about health effects.
Yes, we are.
And that's You can't open there, you can color them and make them all pretty.
And that's why, that's why we have Dr. Ely with us so that when, when we're ready to talk about health effects, I can hand over the discussion to him.
Could I ask you another question? Would you be willing to look at other sites?
Well, yes.
Would you really?
You know, we
I know, I know you want to be in the community and I think we all want to have you. We're just concerned with the placement of these whips, you know, the structures and different things like that. So if you're willing to look at other areas to fill your void, you know, I think, I think some of the common council members here would be more than happy to help you.
Well, we're here tonight to talk about why that would not make sense and why the proposed site makes the most sense and why the health concerns are not concerns that you should have. And if I can turn the discussion over to our expert in the area, Mayor. May I? Dr. Ely?
We'll be able to question you afterwards, Dr. Ely.
Please.
I'm Dr. Tom Ely. As Mr. Levy explained, he makes me feel like an old man when he's talking about half a century, but actually it has been most of that
Thank you, Dr. Ely.
All right. Is this, is this on?
Yeah. Just lift it up a little bit.
There. Thank you.
We're gonna go talk close, all right? Okay. All righty. It's, it has been about 45 years that I've been involved in the field of evaluating the safety of biological effects of non-ionizing electromagnetic radiations. And the field has been under considerable study for that length of time. The cellular phones have been around for only a few years and very few years. And, and I think there's some perception that that's all the information that we have about health effects. But the, it, it doesn't matter where the, the, the field does not have to come from a cellular telephone system. It can come from anything else that makes similar fields. And those have been around in enough to study, in field strength enough to study for, as I say, about 45 years. The standards organization, the ANSI, American National Standards Institute, has been, excuse me, evaluating and, and publishing standards for about that same length of time. The, the size of the standards committee has grown over that period of time. I was a member of the original chameleon. It was five people when I was a member of the original chameleon, it was five people when, when we started. It's now about a hundred and twenty-five people. The, is a continuing process of evaluation of the world's literature, which is now well over ten thousand documents. The nineteen ninety-two standard has, well, the, the institute says in every five years you have to do one of three things, either reaffirm the standard, revise the standard, or abandon the standard. And the nineteen ninety-two standard was reaffirmed in nineteen ninety-seven. So it's, as of last year, the standard was, was reaffirmed. The NCRP standard, National Council on Radiation Protection and Measurements, standard was, is under continuous review also. The two standards are entirely compatible. If, they're not identical, I think if they were identical, you'd be a little suspicious that, that they just copied from one another. But they, they have arrived at very similar values. And indeed, the, there's, there are European standards, there's a Canadian standard, and they're all very, very similar and, and I would say entirely compatible. Now, I've done some calculations on a field strength associated with a proposed installation that, assuming all of the most conservative assumptions. In other words, I've assumed that all channels are on at full power all the time, which is never the case, but I've assumed that they, that they are. And I've come up with a figure at the, at the position of, of the greatest access to, to the antenna that is about a hundred and fifty times below any of these, of these standards. And, well, one thing that says to you, I think it'd be appropriate if somebody wants to put another antenna up there with similar power, maybe it should come back to this group and, for reevaluation. And then you say, well, now we're only eighty times below the standard.
Are you making reference on the standards to, to the thermal effect?
I'm making a reference to the standard which include, has included the, which includes thermal and all other effects.
The actual numbers, could you give us the numbers that the standards are and the relative ratio of thermal to non-thermal?
Point five six milliwatts per square centimeter.
Like five six?
Point five six.
Milliwatts?
Milliwatts per square centimeter.
That's the standard.
That is the, that's approximately, I can do out the more places if you want.
Right, yes, absolutely.
All right.
Sir, is this standards for adults or for children?
This standard is designed for twenty-four hour day, three hundred and sixty-five day a year, conception through old age for the sick and the well and, you know, that's...
It's thermal effect, though. In other words, if you're not too, what about bio effects?
The committees have considered all effects and, and have concluded that the thermal effect is the limiting effect and have based the standard on that.
So the standard is based on thermal, not bio?
Based on thermal effect.
Okay, so it's pretty much irrelevant, everything you say.
That's what we've been saying.
I'm sorry.
That's precisely what we have been saying.
Yes. The committee has concluded that the other effects are not important.
I would really seriously like to see that in writing. I'd really seriously...
I have it, it's on the webpage, I have it.
I have the, I have the document, you're welcome to look at it.
That it's your own.
Is ludicrous as it sounds, yes. Can I ask you, what do you think this, the entire country, New Zealand, has banned placement of these towers, schools if they're so harmless?
I have no idea.
If I may, Dr. Ely, if you would, could you, could you explain why it is that the thermal effect has been determined to be the limiting effect? I mean, it's, these...
I can tell you that because it's been heard by standing too close to a, to a radio antenna.
Mayor, if we could...
So, I mean, that's an obvious...
Let him explain, please.
If you could, Dr. Ely, if you could explain why the thermal effect is the limiting effect and why it's not that the biologic effect has been ignored, but I, I take you to say that the thermal effect, considering the thermal effect is to include the biologic effect, but if you could explain that to the folks?
Yeah, I think, I think we ought to have breakfast time in if we're...
Thermal technician?
I'm sorry.
Thermal technician?
Defined thermal technician. I have done two years of laboratory research in thermal.
Electrification technician?
No, sir.
Are you an electrician technician?
No, sir.
Are you a magnet, a magnetic technician?
No, sir.
Then you cannot explain the thermal breakdown of that magnitude because you don't know anything about it.
I think we need to let the doctor continue with this point.
Dr. Ely, I'd like to hear what you have to say, but here's what I'd like to know. I'd like to know what your degrees are in, I know, and what colleges you attend, where you have been employed, and where you've done your research, and who pays for your research. When you introduced yourself, you didn't tell us who you are, where you're coming from, and who pays for you to come here, and that's just as important. And then I'd like you to continue on.
Okay. I have an M.D. degree from Georgetown University in Washington, D.C. I have a master of science degree in radiation biology from the University of Rochester. I have done hands-on research at the, on the effects of microwaves, which is what we're talking about now, at the Naval Medical Research Institute in Bethesda, Maryland. I was in the Navy for twenty years, at Kodak for twenty-three years, at the University of Rochester for two years, at the U.S. Atomic Energy Commission for five years, and what else did you ask?
No, I completely understand what I'm asking. Ms. Ely, Thomas?
Are your experiences through the...
You can ask a question. Mayor, could we have a little order here? I mean, it's just impossible for Dr. Ely to give an organized response when he's being barraged with several voices from the audience. We're here to answer any and all questions from the audience and the council, but it's just, it's just impossible to do that in a fair fashion when there's no order.
All right.
Fair enough.
Let him have his say.
Well, very briefly, if we're going to go into so-called biological effects, I think we better have breakfast time in because it's going to take a long time, and I don't think we have time to do that. The, I made a couple of comparisons. I liked the gentleman that said he didn't like the hundred watt light bulb comparison. I don't particularly like that one either, but it is, it also could be mentioned that the hundred watt light bulb has, puts out frequencies far higher than the cellular telephone.
I'd like to just ask one more question.
No, not now.
Who's his employee?
Not now.
Who's, who employs him?
Well, I'll answer...
Not now.
Who are you employed by?
I'll answer that. I am, I am a private consultant. I charge for my time, I do, I, I'm not paid for what I say.
Don't work for the government.
Don't work for the government, no, sir. Last, last outfit I worked for, for was Kodak. Okay. The, well, I'd just like to make a couple of comparisons. The, we all radiate electromagnetic radiation, and the person in the far corner of the room over there is irradiating me, and I'm irradiating her at a far higher field strength than anybody could receive from this base station antenna. I did a rough calculation that said that you'd have to be about two hundred and sixty feet away from somebody to, to be down where this, this level would be. So my, my suggestion is if you're willing to come within two hundred and sixty feet of somebody, you shouldn't worry about this cellular antenna. Another comparison is it's, maybe I already mentioned this, it's about thirty thousand times less than sunshine. And in sunshine, it's actually worse because it has ultraviolet in it. Well, I think, I think where I'm coming from, I recognize the name of Dr. Becker. There are others I could, I could mention. It, it's what makes the world go around, different differences of opinion, and Dr. Becker and a few others are in the minority. The vast majority of the experts in this field believe that these levels are, that a point five six milliwatts, in this case, are perfectly safe, and that has a, a factor of fifty, a factor of safety of fifty built into it. In other words, you'd have to have it something like fifty times higher than that before you might begin to see some effects. And I just have to go with the majority. I can't read the ten thousand documents in the world's literature, but a hundred and twenty-five of the country's experts can read them and just, and, and draw conclusions from them. And so I, I go with the majority.
Doctor, doctor, may I ask you a question, please? To your knowledge, has there any, has there been any studies done in school areas on children?
There have been studies done on children, whether they were in school areas, I'm not sure, but there've been studies done on children and also on embryos and fetuses, in other words, pregnancy outcome. And long ones, too, I mean...
At the weight, I mean, at what wavelength, the study has been done on children?
I'd have to look that up. Yeah.
I'm not sure that there's a relevant wavelength.
I'd have to look that up, I'm not sure.
Sir, I don't think we need to know numbers. Your presentation, as it is, we are normally combating, you have already stated there is a margin there, and what these people are saying is there is no margin when it comes to the safety of the kids. You acknowledge that there is a safety factor, whatever, how great the trust is, we're not willing to take that risk. Maybe you are, we are not. And if it's such a guarantee, the Frontier Cellular should have no problem doing what this gentleman asks, to put in a guarantee to pay for any problems that you say will never happen. That's like taking a bet. You want to bet that the Bulls won the series because it's a safe bet? You're telling us that if you put this tower up, it's a safe bet, a hundred percent guarantee? And is Frontier Cellular willing to admit that Cell One can construct towers that are safe retrovain, and you were not? They had the technology to do that, and you did not?
I was here for Cell One a while ago, too.
Yeah. It's our family, it's our project, you're one.
I'm a mountain, I'm a rock scientist, I often concern lots of children, and just, if there's a mark on the air like they say, please don't do it.
What can I say? Most, all my children are between conception and old age.
I'd like to just take a shot at summarizing this because I think you could be here for the wee hours of the morning going back and forth. I think basically the evidence presented is, there's a lot of evidence on both sides. None of it seems to be conclusive. And there's a majority of opinion and there's a minority of opinion, and there's times that the minority of opinion, if there is a doubt, then maybe there's something there. That's the issue. I think what this boils down to, it's a public, public relations issue with Frontier Cellular and the community. And because, I don't, I don't think you're going to end up with a conclusive result in the debate. So I guess as a cellular phone customer, Frontier Cellular, and I haven't had any problem with coverage up in Water Tower Hill. I usually had, had it in Portland, the liquid towers there. But the issue is, is it worth the public relations problem of getting neighbors and people all riled up as opposed to simply finding another site? Because I realize because cellular phones are utilities and there is an overall well that is done by the, the utility, that you cannot stop them from locating, that's not the issue. The issue is, is there an alternative site that may also serve your purpose and serve our purpose at the same time? So we're just looking at a win-win, it's not a knock-down, drag-out, you can, you can't.
I'd like to add to that, that's all good, and I agree with that. But there's a real problem in this room, and one of them is, for instance, you notice by the way, Dr. Ely didn't tell us we're talking about microwaves. I don't know how many times the salesman mentioned that before, not microwaves. You know, now you're first from the expert's mouth, we are talking about microwaves. Secondly, we're talking about apples and oranges. Point fifty-six million watts per centimeter squared is a meaningless number to ninety-nine point nine-nine percent of us in this room, myself included, because it doesn't tell me at what wavelength we're talking about. I am emitting electromagnetic waves to you, you are emitting electromagnetic waves to me. Yes, but they're not focused waves in a defined form via an antenna and very tightly controlled. We're talking about apples and oranges. He says that a hundred and twenty-five people have set safety standards, a hundred and twenty-five people, and I really would ask you please to read the last paragraph again because this is what the hundred and twenty-five people said. I know it's complicated, but you've got to understand it. It says, "Studies so far have not disproved the null hypothesis." The null hypothesis is, remember, that EMF has no effects on living organism. That's the null hypothesis. The name of the game is can we disprove it or not? Studies have not disproved that. Do you understand what that's saying? They've not disproved that it has no effect. But when you look at these studies, they are giving a confidence level, a probability value, call it what you will, roughly in the range of fifteen to twenty percent, ten percent probability that these cause no harm. That is not saying that they cause no harm. It is saying that because science, by convention, has stated that a scientist will not put his name on something as being yes or no until you have a confidence level of less than point five, and many times point one. This means if there's less than a five percent chance that these things are not harmful, then we will agree that they're not harmful. There isn't a study out there of the ten thousand studies that are talking about radio wave frequencies that have come to a conclusion that there's a less than five percent probability that these cause no harm. Most of them say there's about a ten or twenty percent probability that they cause no harm. You have to understand that. This gentleman is correct. Cell towers are here to stay. Be aware, once they're here, you can't regulate it, you have no control over them. But you do have some control about setting the standard of where to put them. And ask yourself, is seventy-two hundred dollars per year worth it? We have things like a Bristol here landfill that's going to be forever useless land. Boy, why not stick a tower out there? No one's going to play there, live there, go to school there, have a daycare center there. Excuse me, there's a racetrack right next door where children go. How do they...
Well, it's needed here to work.
But I mean, we do need to look at this community and say, cell towers are here. But my God, it's spoken that hard out that for seventy-two hundred bucks, they're going to say because of twenty percent probability that these are not harmful, they're going to grab the seventy-two hundred bucks? There is an issue here.
I understand.
Dr. Ely is an intelligent man, but he is not talking about what, so you ever want to watch Frontier watch this?
Thank you.
Mayor, could I ask the gentleman from Frontier Cellular again if he would look for another site? Please?
John, I think you ought to pull the cops again, how they feel about it.
Okay. Well, what I'd like to do is I'd like to, what, you, you, okay, I asked a question of him.
He's asked one question, would you please respond to that?
The situation we have here is that we have a site, we have what we believe is the best site for Fulton, and this is the site that, that we intend to, to keep. If circumstances change such that we were forced to consider other sites, then we would be in a position where we would have to look at other sites.
Okay, your honor, being, being what he just said, I would like to pass a resolution to rescind your agreement with Frontier Cellular then, because then he would be forced to look for another site. with Frontier Cellular, then, because then he would be forced to look for another site.
I think a point of information, John, has been a motion made in the past to have me look into the legalities of the contract. I would caution you strongly to at least let me do that before you make such a motion. There may be some legal repercussions, we can't just sign contracts and then throw them out the next meeting.
But he said that he would look if he was forced to look at other sites, and we could force him, like that's their resolution.
Maybe he should define what he means by force, then, he may have meant forced by a court of law. I don't think you, I mean, I'm not telling you either way how I'm going to come out on this, but I think you ought to at least let the resolution was passed, I think you ought to let the mechanism work, because there are seriously repercussions.
Could I ask him what he meant by that, then?
Sure, if you'll answer, I don't know. He may not want to.
I would prefer not to get into scenarios that are hypothetical. We have a situation here where Frontier has entered into a lease with the city and is approved to construct its site on the water tank.
Can I ask you a quick question? In your search, when you were looking for appropriate places, how many sites turned up besides the Water Tower and Tilpath Towers?
John?
There are five or six other potential suitable sites, not necessarily ranked best, one through seven or whatever, but there are others on the potential list.
And again, from the telephone company's perspective, this is a superb site, because it's city property, to the extent rent is paid, it adheres to the benefit of the city and its inhabitants. The antennas will be on an existing massive structure, unobtrusive, and, as I mentioned earlier, in order to provide service, we have to be somewhere, and for those reasons, this is a wonderful site for Fulton.
How about the liability? Is there a move-on by the cellular industry to shift the liability to site owners with the FCC? Are there lobby groups that are doing that right now?
To shift what liability?
Any liability. I have a document here that says there's a move-on by the industry at the FCC to shift all liability onto the site owners.
I don't know what liability you're talking about, sir. A liability as between a landlord and a cellular provider would be a matter of contract. My experience is that, it's my understanding that the convention is that the cellular providers, the cellular providers, as a matter of contract, are responsible for their own acts and omissions, but I can't speak for the entire industry, I don't know what you're specifically referring to there.
There's so much stuff on this, and I was one of the guys that supported this, and I'll be honest with you, I'm sorry I did. I really am. And I'm not saying that from a health standpoint, because we have a law regulating how I think about the health of this matter. I can't say that I think this is a health issue, because legally I can't, but one thing, and I'm not sure that there is a health issue, one thing that bothers me is, is a councilman, that we have a bunch of people that don't feel right in their homes, they don't have peace of mind. It's not the same as being sick, you know what I mean? They don't have peace of mind. So, we're going to get $7,200, and I did look at that, and I guess the more I get, the more narrow my mind gets, and I'm sorry for that, but for $7,200, it's not worth it. We're here to represent the people, and I think we probably should have had public hearings. Man, I certainly understand your point of view, and I really would hope that you could look at another site, because you know how these people feel, and I would also like the council to be able to do a moratorium on this, because there's many cities that have done this, that are regulating, and involve the public, the planning commissions, and have some more of a big process put in place, so when we're gone, and we will be, some of us, that another council doesn't come along and just do this. I've been here a lot of years, often, and I should have known better. We should have listened, we should have had some kind of input from the public. It doesn't have to say that I agree with everyone that thinks that there's a health issue here. They don't have peace of mind, and we weren't put here to represent you, or just to look at that bottom line, we were put here to represent them, and I feel very badly that we didn't. We represented you first. You were wrong.
Thank you, Ron. We have passed a resolution to have the city attorney look into the existing contract and see if there's anything that can be done with that.
Well, can I ask a question then of them? Are they going to construct or do anything with the Water Tower before our city attorney takes a look at our contractual agreement with you?
We will confer with the city attorney after the meeting, and we should be on that.
Can I ask a question, too?
Thank you.
My question is directed to everybody on the side of the room, and that is, because you've read more than probably all of us put together, is there, have you seen a pattern in habitual distance from schools, if laws are out there, even New Zealand, Australia, whatever, California, Chicago, that you can't be within X number of feet, miles, kilometers, whatever, from school? Is there a number that is generally accepted? Well, I saw something about 2,500 feet, and the school is 700 feet. Now, my question over here, of the five other places that are on the list, are any of them in excess of 2,500 feet from a school?
I can't say from all schools, but this particular school, I believe, yes. I mean, I don't know what other schools.
According to what Dr. Ely is saying, okay, and what the experts in the field are saying, it would make no difference with respect to the RF radiation, okay? An irony here is that, talking about community reaction, in many cases, it's necessary for a tower to be constructed, because an existing structure is not available, and folks turn out to meetings upset about that scenario and ask, hey, why can't you go on that existing structure over there? It's already there. Why can't you put your antennas on that thing, so we don't have to look at it like that? It's an ironic situation. Here, we've got the exact opposite, where we're on an existing structure, the distance from the school from a health standpoint is irrelevant.
Well, maybe in your eyes it is.
I think what the problem is, is the people here tonight are saying that they do not think it is irrelevant, that it is very relevant, and studies haven't shown beyond a shadow of a doubt that there isn't a problem, and that's what they're looking for. They're looking for a guarantee, and you can't give the guarantee.
No, we cannot prove a negative, and we cannot prove a 100 percent certainty, and, you know, if we live like that, we would all stay in bed, but then we'd be concerned that we shouldn't stay in bed either. I mean, we drive, we do all kinds of things based on the best of our knowledge, we have to go with what we know, not what we don't know, and our best knowledge is that there is no health concern in this area.
I think, at this point in time...
Your Honor.
At this point in time, what I would like to do, this was not called as a public hearing, I think we need to advertise for a public hearing on this, to allow everybody in the community a chance to discuss this, rather than just the few that have banded together here, and I would look for a motion to have a public hearing on this situation.
That's in my district, I'll move that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Could I respond to Dr. Ely? I didn't come at the beginning of the meeting, and I was told by him that I could ask him a few questions to respond to them, so I'd like that opportunity, since he stated, and the lawyer, that I could do it after he spoke, and I was quiet enough to let everybody else talk and go on.
We'd be happy to talk with...
Do right, I want to do it right here. No, I'd like to do it right here.
We have some other business we have to take care of, and if you want to discuss this...
When after Dr. Becker's name, and I would like to tell him this, he stated for the record that only a few, the minority, have the difference of opinion, that it's the majority, and you go with the majority. I would like to tell you that I know Dr. Becker, and I cry for him.
That doesn't make any difference at this point in time.
Let me tell you.
Please, please, we'll just see him afterwards. You're having a difference of opinion here, and it's not going to do any good to just discuss this.
Your Honor...
But you can hear the questions. Do I have a...
Your Honor, I just would like to say one more thing about it. I was at a school board meeting last night, and the school board voiced their concern about the placement of those antennas up on...
I have received that information from the superintendent of schools. Do I hear a motion to go to executive session?
Mayor, I'd like to say something before we go into executive session to these people that are out here. Even though I'm the alderman, I represent the second ward, I also work for all of you people out there. You do have a concern, and that is my concern, and my statement to you is I am on your side. I also want to make a note of correction on a resolution that was voted on, I believe I was noted as on the Frontier Cellular resolution, that I voted yes for that resolution, that is incorrect, I voted no against that resolution. Please make that correction, Joe.
That's correct.
I'd just like to thank, I'd just like to thank the patients who listen to our service, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming tonight.
I'd like to submit these petitions, we only have two days, these are...
Set up your mouth, then from you, and I know...
Most of you are taking checks. Oh, they're going. Most carry.
Nobody wants to ask if it's bad.
But, you know, they have to look at it.
But people want to say, try, you know, the White House...
Because it's going to...
No, but how do you...
Tell me, are we getting ready for...
You guys are...
No, I have to eat my lips.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post, media adjourned.